Yes. Say it's seven o'clock. I declare the regular meeting, May the nineteenth. Ross County Commission is now in order. Ask you to stick your cell phones, please. And if you got a ball cap on, that gentleman there said we can't do that. There you go. Hey, I'll wear them too. Every chance I get. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners. If you're here, do roll call, please. I hope every one of you do. Hey, one of you forgive. You got a turd on my weed, got it?
We not got it. He coming to me then?
I'm marked. I'm marked.
Stroud airs his own Roberts. Stacy Moore.
Mine not coming up.
Ed Hebert, Woodard.
I'm not out.
Mine not popping.
He's in. They're not.
You have to. I see. Sign it out, sign back in.
Sign out, sign back in, gang.
We're working on it. Sign out, help him.
Good seeing you, Mr. Romo. All right, you already got it?
Yeah, thank you. Shouldn't be on the bottom of that.
Here come the man. How many we like now? One, two.
I'm working on it.
Working on it?
I am.
Is it right? You working on it?
I working on it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Is there no?
They didn't have computers. Y'all want to scoot?
And Chad Bryant, sir. I stole that from him.
I forget. You didn't screw what I made.
In college.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Did everybody now?
Yes, sir.
I've got sixteen present and absent. I declare we do have form. Not a form, but a quorum. Okay. Brem, EMS Director. Brent, will you come up and do our invocation? Followed by the pledge and the flag. Will everybody please stand?
Now, we move, please. Father God, thank you for the opportunity to stand before the people of this community, the other entrusted leaders. Would we, right here in the middle of National Law Enforcement or Police Week, pray for the safety of our law enforcement colleagues that take care of our county, our country as a whole. Bless them, please, with a blanket of safety. And as always, we continue to pray for the members of the harm forces. Grant us our freedom. Father God, we pray for a child that we took to Nashville earlier from a serious accident. Wrap your arms around that child in the healing process. Thank you for everyone taking care of her. And bless us all as we make good and wise decisions that benefits the people of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good government for which it stands, on the nation, on the God, and the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brent. Miss was in your package. It's minutes from the previous meeting. I'll take a motion. Got a motion by Stubblefield?
Okay.
Got a second by Commissioner Stroud. Any question about the minutes? Not? If you approve, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone disagree? Minutes are filed. Okay, communications. We got some. We're gonna be kind of lengthy, gang, so let's start. I'm going to ask Todd Garland to come up from the Ross County Clinic. This was something that Doc Martin had wanted to happen tonight. I guess Doc just gonna have to watch a rerun. He's not here. He's not here.
He's eating lobster tonight.
Maybe we should go meet with Doc. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, just explain what's going on out there and how much money the county's saving.
Okay, good deal. My name is Todd Garland. I'm with a company called Medical Analysis. We've been doing onsite and/or nearsite primary and acute care and occupational medicine clinics in the southeast for probably about twenty years now. And I guess it's almost been four years ago, right kind of on the heels of COVID, that I came and began meeting with Mayor Vogel and members of the Robertson County School System and in the city of Springfield in a shared site clinic. And we've had a lot of success over the last almost four years now. We've had about sixteen thousand visits that have come through the clinic on the primary and acute care side. We've had over a thousand occupational medicine visits in our locations as well. I think we've had over seven thousand lab procedures that have been ordered and come through the clinic, all in a non-claims-based clinic model. And what that simply means is we don't bill insurance in our clinics. The members of the group pay a per employee per month fee for families to have access to the clinic, which breaks out to be about thirteen dollars a month is what the clinic costs. No copays, no deductibles associated with any of our visits, so it's free to all of the family members of those three entities, as well as the employees. One of the challenges were bus drivers, you know, and being able to provide care for bus drivers. So all of your bus drivers at the schools, at the county, have access to the clinic as well. DOT physicals, so all your bus driver physicals and all of those things are handled in the clinic as well. So when you don't bill insurance, you have a claims offset to the health plan for the county and for the school system and for the city. And so that's how we kind of generate an ROI, is by not billing insurance for any of the physicals, any of the physicals, any of the work comp injuries that come through, any of our women's health, men's health exams that we're doing. None of that hits a claims model. We also stock medications onsite that do not hit a pharmacy plan. They're at a cost pass-through. To give you an example of that, we stock Z-Packs. I could get Z-Packs for two dollars and ten cents. When a Z-Pack bills an insurance, it's two to three hundred dollars for that medication. So that claim is taken out of the claims pool. And overall, I think we're seeing a net savings, and this comes from Hub, who is your insurance broker that you guys work with. But we work with Hub to sort of calculate the ROI's, return on investment, if you would. And I think we're netting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year savings after the cost of the clinic for the county alone. That does not include savings that are yielded for the school systems and for the city of Springfield. Works really well. It's a very powerful recruitment and retention tool. Whenever you're in a time when it's hard to give benefits to employees and to family members, you've got a clinic that doesn't cost them anything. It's a pretty powerful tool on the recruitment side. And then it's strong, has strong sticking power on the retention side. But that's about a thirty thousand foot view summary of what we do. It's worked well. We manage about, it's probably about thirty-five to forty of these clinics in the southeast, and they've all seemed to work really well. Does that kind of hit all the high spots?
Think you done pretty good.
So keep it in short.
Gang, if you don't pull that insurance cover out, we save money.
That's right.
We appreciate it. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Garland?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Done good. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay, the Chair's gonna recognize Commissioner Bubba Doris. He has a proclamation he'd like to read.
Yes, sir. I'd like to, if I could get the Buck Dancin' Championship.
Go to Mike's, leave it here, Bubba.
This proclamation, if I can get Ms. Elizabeth Clark and her group up here, if it's okay, I'd like to get them to, I'm gonna give them a proclamation if Ms. Elizabeth's here. Would you come up, please?
There you go. Don't be bashful.
Don't be bashful, young lady. Come on. You can't burn and dance in front of everybody. Come on over.
Looks like she's got her shoes on. We're gonna get to see a show.
Oh, no. This is Ms. Elizabeth Clark, and what it is, where is Elizabeth Clark, age fifteen, Byron Plains, is the resigning Tennessee State Buck Dancin' Championship after winning the Robert Spicer Moore State Buck Dancin' Championship in June of twenty-four. And whereas Elizabeth has been dancing since she was old enough to walk, learning the traditions of the Appalachian art from both her father and her grandmother. And whereas she has won numerous awards and competitions and is currently a member of the square dance team, Tennessee Rhythm, a youth square dance team based out of Robertson County under the direction of Cheryl Shawn, a green rider. And whereas Tennessee Rhythm has competed across the region at brick grass competitions, going undefeated in twenty-four and becoming the Smithfield Fiddler's Gemma Ree Youth Square Dance Champions, leading the team to perform with the Grand Ole Roberts Square Dancers on March of twenty-five. And where the team can be seen performing locally at Robertson County events like the fire, the parade, the dressmanship. And you was at, was y'all at Cross Plains this past weekend at Kilgooray Trace thing? So if you was up there, you seen them dance. Y'all probably seen them. For Elizabeth and Tennessee Rhythm are committed to preserving this time-honored tradition of square dancing here in Middle Tennessee. Now, therefore, Mr. William A. Vogel, as Robertson County Mayor, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May twentieth of twenty-five, as Elizabeth Clark and Tennessee Rhythm Day in Robertson County and in the region of both Elizabeth's and Tennessee Rhythm's championship titles. Whoo, that's a lot of talk, buddy.
Robert Spicer, again.
Again, okay.
Yes, sir.
Y'all come out here.
Hey, wait a minute. He's gonna take a picture.
I heard you want to be in the picture.
Well, they don't pay you for the whereas now.
Whereas.
That's what I'm in there, idiot.
Oh, yes, sir. Want to get a twin, sir?
Sir.
All right.
What'd you dance to? Rock and Roll?
Sally Ride.
Never heard of her. Thank you.
Oh, one more, Mayor, one more.
Heather Monks.
That's, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Keep on, good work.
Contest this past weekend.
She did? All right, thank you. Now, the Chair's gonna recognize Commissioner Stubblefield doing a proclamation for EMS Week, and that's recognized. First responders.
Like to ask the members of E nine-one line dispatch office to come forward, please.
This is something that long overdue. When we have an emergency call in Ross County, the first people to get is the dispatchers. They're having to talk people into situations to help them out, relay the news to our responding agents.
Rachel Payne is our Director of the E nine-one Dispatch. Rachel, would you like to introduce your dispatchers?
Sure. This is Danielle Jones, Jason Pinnacle, the Assistant Director, and Jeff Morton, our Department.
Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and the members of the EMS teams are ready to provide care for two those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas it is emergency dispatchers who often provide the first care to people in need. And thanks to the nine-one-one Saves Act legislation currently making its way through Congress and has passed here in Robertson County, dispatchers will be reclassified as first responders. I'm sorry, I get emotional about this. Granted, granting those professionals the recognition they deserve for their vital contributions to public safety. And whereas the members of the EMS teams include emergency medical dispatchers, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, nurses, and physicians, whether career or volunteer, they all engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of all emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, William A. Vogel, as Robertson County Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Robertson County, and ask everyone to join me in this worthy observance. Congratulations to y'all. Lisa.
You got one?
Lisa, these dispatchers are the first responders to our first responders, and we couldn't serve the people of this county without our dispatchers. Come on in.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Stubblefield. While they're getting seated, last week was Sheriff Noddy Law Enforcement Week, where we recognized the fallen officers across the country. John F. Kennedy started that, I think, in, what, nineteen sixty-two or something? And I think, Sheriff, you recognize nine?
Four.
Four in this county? Okay. Yeah, that was a pretty nice twenty-one gun salute. It was nice. Get a chance next year, come out. Okay, we're moving right along here with Brent. You want to come back up and recognize some employees? Brent's our ambulance director.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen here of our community. I could like to ask my employees that are here with EMS Department, the four new paramedics, if y'all come up. As they're coming up, you see these TV shows that's out here with medical dramas, you know? And whereas a lot of that's Hollywood, a lot of it can't hold alike to the reality that what we actually deal with. And you'll see these big, busy emergency rooms all across the country, and there's two or three doctors, four or five nurses, a respiratory therapist, and some other specialists all sitting there taking care of one person. In the back of that moving ambulance at seventy miles an hour, can you imagine being a young new paramedic, twenty-some years old, ink's not drawing your license, and all that responsibility's on you? I've got four of our employees right here. These folks have been advanced EMTs with us for some time now. And just over the last week or two, all four of them have completed the program. They're about two years in with this specialized training. So, and they've been trained in pretty much everything that can be done there in the emergency room in the first twenty, thirty minutes, they can do, single-handedly. So when the good Lord made paramedics, he needed to make us like an octopus with a bayonet arm. Y'all have to do the best you can with the two you got, so. But they have got, down here on the end, Ms. Kaylee Hamlin. Ms. Kaylee, she was riding with us as a student here some years back. Just a couple of years ago now. Had a really bad accident on State Line Road. A man was pinned under a vehicle. And I looked up and I said, who is that little young lady right there? He said, she's a student. I said, boy, she sure is fast. We need to hire her. And the rest is history, so. And then here, Mr. Jared Davis, he is a veteran of the US Army. And then, and then now we've got Ladarius Huddleston here. Ladarius is a man of few words. You don't speak, do you? I worked with Ladarius's father at Nashville Fire Department years ago. And so I guess it means I'm a little closer to retirement, seeing you compare me. And then last but not least, Mr. Jacob Seerly.
He's soon to be married, so that payroll that paramedic lives to help pay for the wedding.
We all call him Curly. I'm proud of all of them, and thank you all for trusting them. They got a big job ahead of them.
Thank y'all. Hey, Brent, I think Fay wants a picture.
Oh, Miss Fay's gonna get a contract.
Y'all making history.
Oh, well, let's get in together here a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, make Miss Fay cry.
Ain't got me, dude, Fay.
I can scoot over and picture you. Are you not wanting?
I give my picture to plenty.
I'm so proud of y'all. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank y'all. Okay, it's time for me and all the county Commissioners to congratulate all our high school graduates. Get something to see after programs, the way the parents and the kids are so happy. Congratulations to all the, well, the school board and the teachers and doctor weeks for the work they've done, getting our kids ready for the future. Amen. And on a very sad note, as I watched some of these graduations, I could feel the spirit of Steve Haley in the room. Steve was our Chairman of the Education Committee. And he took a lot of, a lot of pride in these students. And Steve has been one of the silver bullets on this county commission. And he's gonna be missed. And next is, if you hadn't heard, Roger Blackwood passed away Saturday. Roger served on the county commission for many years. That's back when we could put on a show between him and Mike Crawford and Carl Swan. And he's gonna be missed, but after he got out of the commission, he made sure that airport was built right. He went out there and stayed with them contractors. And I had one tell me the other day when they done the work up here at the chamber, the duffel building, they said Roger sure was a pain in the butt. But he got it done right. That's what he did. That was Roger Blackwood. His funeral services are gonna be Friday. All right, I think that's all I've got. At this time, we'll go to public comments. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment about something that's on the gender, other than the public conference on it? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to our reports. Start off with the highway report. Any questions or comments? Better Services, any questions or comments? Planning, any questions or comments? Animal Control, any questions or comments? Trustees Report, any questions or comments? Solid Waste, any questions or comments? I just want to note that we had, we spent three hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars shipping trash out of Ross County this past month. We shipped over eight thousand and twenty-four tons. Want to make a note of that to show you how much trash we're beginning to make. All right, the EMA Report, any questions or comments? Fire Report, any questions or comments? EMS, any questions or comments? Last Finance, any questions or comments? Chair, we'll take a motion with Commissioner Couts. I got a second by Commissioner Rommel. No questions? If you follow the filing report, say aye. Anybody opposed? So moved. Thank y'all. Okay, at this time, we move to our zoning. Who am I gonna, somebody, oh, election. We got a election coming up here. Chair recognized Commissioner Stubblefield.
Hello, Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. The nominating committee has met in session this evening, and we bring in, we place in the nomination the name of Norma Dutton on the library board. This will be continuing. She's already on the board, and this will be continued another three-year term for her. So we place her name in the nomination. Next second.
Got a second by Commissioner Couts. Question being asked before this lady to be on the library board again, say aye. Anybody opposed? Move. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, now we'll move to the public hearing. If Pam and Hunter come up, they're gonna read the resolutions that are up for a rezoning. And I'll ask if anybody wants to make a comment on that piece of property.
Resolution number zero five one nine two five zero three five. Glenn Fry requests a rezon two point eight zero. Surveyed acres from AG two to RP forty, located at eighty-three forty-five Horseshoe Road. Tax map zero eight five, parcel zero eight two, second voting district. Planning Commission recommended by a vote of five to zero.
Is anybody here to speak on that zoning resolution? Seeing none, honor?
Resolution number zero five one nine two five zero three six. Barbara Spain, executor of the Herschel Wooden State, requests a rezon two point zero nine acres of the eleven surveyed acres from AG two to RP eighty, located at forty-five forty Roy Cole Road. Tax map zero six zero, part of parcel zero seven six, eighth voting district. The Planning Commission recommended by a vote of five to zero.
Anybody here to speak on that resolution? Seeing none, honor?
Resolution number zero five one nine two five zero three seven. Reyes Construction requests a rezon seventy-three point six three acres from AG two to RP eighty, located on Pinson School Road. Tax map zero nine three, parcels one nine nine point zero zero and one nine nine point zero one, third voting district. The Planning Commission recommended by a vote of four to one.
Anybody here to speak on this resolution?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk says we have someone.
Powell Whitburn.
Whitburn? Yeah, hey, if you will state your name and address, and Madam Clerk's gonna put three minutes on the clock.
I won't take that. I'm Todd Whitburn. I live at thirty-five forty-seven Pinson School Road. My property joins the property that considered rezoning. The problem that I have with it is our road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Pinson School Road and seventy-six. How it comes out right there. It's a very dangerous road. We have probably forty-four houses on our whole road, and I'm talking about putting thirty-one houses just in that, almost doubling our population on our road. And we have a very narrow road. It's dangerous. And I just don't know if they've done any studies on the traffic patterns there or what, or what you guys have seen, but I don't think it's a safe area. They're gonna do something with the road. I'm not against growth or anything like that. You gotta do the infrastructure first before we keep building, building, building. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Charles Gregory.
Hello, Charles Gregory, thirty-six oh two Pinson School Road. My land doesn't join any of the property, but my concern is also the traffic. That's a narrow road. We've got like nine ninety-degree turns in. We've got like nine ninety-degree turns in it. Uh, it's just not that road for traffic. Also, where it comes out on Highway seventy-six, uh, you've got a blind spot there. And from what we've been told, uh, seventy-six has got to be like another decade before that's got to be addressed. So, uh, if, you know, we add that much more traffic, it's, it's no doubt, it's, it's, it's gonna be a, a problem with the rest. That, that's one of my concerns and, uh, also, uh, uh, gas and water, you know? Has anybody done any studies on the gas and water? So, uh, that water line's laid years ago. I don't know how many houses was there at that time, but it's had to grow since then. And you're talking about almost doubling it again. So, uh, that's a concern also, and I appreciate you dying. Thank you.
Thank you. That it? Okay, I, this time I'm gonna stop the public hearing on zoning and bring it back to the county commission. Honor, we're gonna start with A, Ag two, RP forty, Glenn Fry, voting district two. I need a motion. Somebody wants to speak? I get a motion and second, and then we'll speak.
I move.
I got a motion by Roberts and a second by Moore. Okay, anybody got any questions for Hunter?
Question.
Question.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. I got fourteen for, one against. That resolution does pass. Okay, we moved it to the B category agriculture residential, Ag two to RP eighty. Start with Barbara Spain, executor Herschel Wooden State, voting district eight. I need a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Hogan and a second by Moore. Any questions for Hunter?
Question.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes. Against it, vote no. Got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. We move down to Reyes Construction Incorporated, from Ag two to RP eighty, voting district three. I need a motion. Just said that, uh, motion by Head Heaver and second by Commissioner Roberts. Questions for Hunter?
Yes, sir. Well, I, I less of a question, more of a statement.
Well, that's just as good.
So, what I, we, it was interesting, we, at night, we got a report on adequate facilities, I think, for the years of hundred, hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That don't pay for a road, that don't pay for ambulance, that don't pay for nothing. This road's crooked, it's dangerous. And, and I'll say it now, and it's not just this one, I'm, I'm opposed to anything that puts more, any kind of development until we get a, a traffic study and a water runoff study. And we get some commitment from these developers that they're gonna help make these roads safer. That, and that don't cover ambulances, emergency services, schools. Yeah, growth don't pay for growth. And, and we've got to, at some point, come up with a better way to fund it, then we're done. So I'm, I'm against it for that purpose.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stroud?
Yeah, so back in February, we passed that resolution that was zero zero two two four, two five oh one four. And Clyde had said that night, that resolution was gonna, uh, help us to require developers to have more skin in the game, widening roads and putting in turning lanes and, and things like that. And, uh, you know, any of these developments, at, at least where we are right now, that they're required or are requesting rezonings for multiple dwellings. I, I think we ought to pump the brakes on that. We know where we are in this resolution and what, what it's gonna be for us and what we can do with it.
Okay, let me say that, uh, our county attorney has been with the highway department. We've met with several different candidates, they're more developed than we are. And, uh, our highway department and the superintendent of the highway department have looked it over and marked things they liked and want to see done. And it's in their hands for the highway commissioners, which are elected people, to pass what they want, and it will come to us. That has done been done, it's in their hands.
But when's that, it's gonna happen.
They, they always meet the last, uh, they'll meet before the next meet. Yeah. I think.
I think it's the last Thursday.
Last Thursday, May, is when the highway department meets at four o'clock, if anybody'd like to go. I try to make everyone. Anybody else got a question? Let's see, it looks like I got, uh, Roberts, you wanna talk?
Yeah, um, you know, I have to echo what these citizens are saying. I'm out that road a lot. A lot of these people have lived on it for many years, which it was nothing. It's very curvy, and if you've ever been out through that road, night during the day, it's a cut through from seventy-six into Greenbrier. Nighttime is horrible with so many roads, with so many curves and stuff. You know, we turned one down in White House off Calista Road, about this many homes due to roads and everything. I don't see how we can pass this tonight. I just, I don't see how we can do that with the, with the roads and everything.
Commissioner Rommel?
Uh, thank you, sir. I just, uh, wanted to say that the, uh, I think under normal circumstances, this would be, uh, an ideal candidate for RP eighty. But, uh, because of the, uh, nature of Penson School Road, it's, uh, you're part of the district that Commissioner Roberts and I represent, um, it's, it's not conducive to this kind of development at all. And, uh, I'm, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
I sympathize with everybody, I'm still the same thing. I have to campaign somewhere close to that place, and it's a local, uh, community all the way down through there, but you don't want to travel that much. It's too many ninety degrees, as the gentleman said, so I'm not in favor of this whatsoever, at this moment.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak?
Question.
Question. Question being called.
I'm representing applicant, I speak in the dress release question.
Who said that?
She represents the applicant. She's here.
Right here on the front, right?
Ma'am, did you sign the sheet?
I did not. I thought that was for the public comment, so you don't mean. I was just wanting to know if I needed to pick up and address some of them.
I can't hear.
It's not enough she can address some of the statements she's representing.
Ma'am, it's, it's backed in front of the county commission. If I let you come up and if somebody wants to rebuttal, then I gotta let them come up.
Okay, thank you.
So it's back, you know, that's, that's the rules and way it happens. I'm sorry. All right, if you pull this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be recognized as being a part of the Reyes Construction group, and I'm gonna abstain on this because I'm, I'm affiliation with some of them on something, okay?
Okay.
I'm gonna abstain, beating that vote on this.
Okay, all right. Before this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. Uh, Mr. Moore? Thank you.
Yeah, there're chickens in a row.
I am not getting chicken.
In a row?
What does "who" mean?
Tick tock, tick tock.
I know, we're proving it all over the freaking county.
Oh, I didn't know if you was trying or you just hadn't decided. Okay, I got fourteen against and none for that resolution fails. Thank you, Hunter and Pam. Okay, we're going to resolutions from the budget committee. Chair recognizes Budget Chairman Bobby Couts.
Mayor, Madam Clerk. Honored guests, fellow commissioners, I'd like to present, uh, Resolution zero five one nine two five zero three eight. I can get a second, we'll discuss.
I got a second. Mr. Moore?
This is a resolution for twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars to outfit, uh, a truck that we bought for the, uh, EMA. And we were able to purchase the truck because, uh, the ambulance service were found the ambulance for a lot less money. Thank you for that. And he was willing to use some of his money left to purchase a badly needed truck for, for services. And this will outfit it and get ready to use, so.
All right, I got the motion by Couts and a second by Moore. Question being called. If you're for that resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. I got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. Commissioner Couts?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, Resolution zero five one nine two five zero four zero. It is for forty thousand dollars. It comes from the opioid, uh, funds, and it's going to, uh.
Blame it. Might have skipped one.
You know where I went, Scoop. I'm sorry, we'll do this again. Zero five one. Zero five one, nine two five, zero three nine. All right, so this is, uh, for the school. It's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars that you're transferring, uh, from their, from their project fund to do HVAC and Innovation Academy. Question?
Is that right, Innovation Academy?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was Cooper Town Elementary. That's no, that's next one, I think, Bobby.
I can read, I just can't count.
Yeah, all right. Everybody done voted? Yeah, I'm ready. Got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. Commissioner Couts?
I'll try again. Zero five one nine two five zero four zero. This is a resolution for forty thousand dollars from the opioid trans, uh, settlement fund. And it is going to, uh, refa- rehab some offices in Countyville.
Yep, drug court for the drug court people and we got two, uh, none props, it's mail. I got a second by Commissioner Moore.
I know, Mayor, do you understand that's the last of it, no, no more?
No, um, the money that's gonna keep drug court where their fee have and all that, that's supposed to go on for another seventeen years. Yeah, opioid money. Now, the money that comes in, at my discretion, it, it could end any time. Cause a lot of these companies are filing bankruptcies to get out of this lawsuit. I mean, just, I think the amounts will get smaller and smaller.
Questions, sir?
All right, question being asked. Head Heaver wants to speak.
I'm just, I'm concerned that we're, I don't mind the money going there. I'm just concerned that if this courtroom goes away, what happens if we need it again? And we're having to do the asbestos, asbestos abatement as well, once we tear all that up? It seems like then we're gonna have to redo, you know, redo, you know, we may have to redo some other courtroom. Are there not any other offices anywhere that these three people that we're making, that are coming back to these, work in the buildings? Is there not anywhere for those people to go?
Well, it's went through building grounds. I'll be honest, I'm not, as, I'm, I'm the wrong one to ask.
You're gonna build anywhere.
Right.
And so I guess the question is to you, or?
Well, these, they're coming back to the offices that they were originally at.
Right.
Now, I talked to the sheriff about this. That hasn't been used as a courtroom in probably before this last little bit, twenty years.
So it wasn't used whenever all of any of the, with the courtroom, courthouse was being remodeled or anything?
But I mean, prior to this, it never was, you know? So, I don't know that we have any other places that we could go, but this was the deal, you know, when we, when they left there, they were gonna come back to this. And this is what we worked out with sheriff and stuff.
But it's a fair question. I, I, I know that we've got one level of this building that we have not utilized, but it's gonna cost a lot to go up there and do it, so we haven't. But yes, we're running out of space.
We're running out of space on second floor. Everybody wants to, and, uh, go forward. Two weeks ago, loaded up three of those great big dumpsters coming off the fourth floor. There was enough junk up there to build them out.
Well, these workers that are at home, are, they're at home right now. So when we do this, they will be coming back.
Right.
Or they've been, and they're wanting to come back. I mean, believe it or not, they're tired of working at home, and it'll be easier on their job for them to come back.
Back on wood, this ought to be the last of all that shuffle. This ought to be the last, and I, hey, I'm gonna say that we've had a problem up there in Judge Goodman's office. Couldn't find it, but they found it this week. Somebody up there on the roof with a saw hit the gutter, it was leaking inside the walls. They found it this week. Okay, anybody else? If this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. I got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. Commissioner Couts?
Yes, sir. This is Resolution zero five one nine two five zero four one. This is some more opioid money, I think, right now the last of it for this year.
Last coming from, unless they send us another check.
Uh, for, uh, thirty-one hundred and fifty-six dollars, and, uh, it goes to CASA. Uh, the, the mayor has been able to, to give this money out, or dollars money out, it was his discretion, and I think he's been, it, it's bothered him. He's tried to be fair about it. He's tried to give it to, to worthy organizations and not commend him because it didn't, wasn't easy. Everybody thought they ought to get something, and I think he's been very thoughtful about how he, how he put it out, so.
Amen.
Well, some of these groups, nobody, for, I even see the check. But, uh, CASA, if you don't know what that is, that's where law goes in somebody's house at night, and there's kids there. Somebody's got to take them till the state can get involved, and that CASA's where they put them up for the night, when mom and dad might be incarcerated. And, uh, the health council, we haven't really helped them a whole lot, and this is not fifteen hundred dollars, so we, and we went with that with them. Any questions?
Question.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. Got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Couts. Chair recognizes Mr. Bubba Dawes. Bubba, you fell in some big shoes tonight.
I'm telling you, that's good in the black.
Well, I'm talking about Mr. Haley, would have brought this resolution to the court.
Commissioners and people that all just mayor them. We're gonna talk about Resolution number zero five one nine two five zero four two. It's a resolution to declare surplus property to where the Board of Education Technology Department is the owner of certain equipment set forth and attached such as items, like laptop computers and such. And they, uh, equipment is no longer necessary. The County Board of Education Technology Department and the school board approved this items to be declared as surplus on their May twelfth, twenty-five meeting. Requested by Ross County Commission to declare this property surplus and provide by Tennessee Code, authorize and authorize the, uh, disre賠償ment of the said items, and now therefore it is being resolved. By the Ross County Commission meeting regular season nineteenth day of May of twenty-five. The items above desire, desire to be used, the Ross County Board of Education Technology Department has declared to be surplus property. And the county mayor and the director of schools is hereby authorized to distribute such items as they deem appropriate in the set fourth hearing. It's passed night, on the nineteenth day of May of twenty-five, to be effective, but passes the, of, of tonight, so.
Bubba, you explained that real good. Anybody got a question?
Question.
Question.
If there's none, I call for question. If you're for this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. I got fifteen four zero against, that resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Dawes.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Doing you tonight, but thanks for that.
We got one more, right?
You do. Any old business come before the county commission? And none of you business. Okay, Commissioner Hogan, would you like to do our notice?
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed and signed the application. Come to notice. Right again, that we elect all those that have applied to be a notary for the county of Robertson and the great state of Tennessee.
Then I've got a second, Mr. Stroud? Only if you're a say aye. Anybody opposed? Don't move. Dawes, would you like to make the last motion?
I'd like to make one more, sir.
Who is?
Motion adjourned.
Don't be. Adjourned.